I said in what?
Yeah.
Everyone is on, I'm still waiting for a couple of more questions to arrive. Remco, you have both a computer and an iPhone up and that's creating a problem?
Yes, I do. Turn one off?
Yes.
Okay.
Need one more member? Yes? Yeah. I had switched one day before. Sorry? No. We're it.
We have time.
I don't have my water. I'm Sarah Malus, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I will call the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022 to order. With me are Sean Zahn, Brian Tollesey, James Mitchell, and Catherine Hatt. The first matter we will take out is the application of Cameron Stevens. I will open the public hearing for the application of Cameron Stevens for a special permit under Sections 5.4, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a second floor dormer on the existing footprint for a master bedroom closet at 16 Old Essets Road, Assessors Map Number 56, Lot Number 19, District B, filed with the Town Clerk on August 3rd, 2022. Is there somebody who will speak on this application?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, just state your name for the minutes.
Hi, Cameron Stevens.
Thank you.
So, my contractor is not getting on, so it's just me.
Okay. Did you want to talk about your application?
Sure, so all I'm requesting to do is just dormer out my master bedroom to add a walk-in closet. There's currently basically a coat closet in the master bedroom. So, just looking to dormer out the side, I guess it would be the west side of the house. And dormering it out, putting in like a sliding barn door on the interior and creating approximately 80-foot square foot closet.
Now, Sean and I were at the site visit and the location of this dormer is on the side away from the street and the house is kind of next to a side yard of the house next to it. So, the addition is going to be being the side yard of the house? Yes. And it's just going up with the roof but not expanding the footprint?
Got it.
It is in the setup. It's already in the setup.
Yeah.
It should not change down. The dormer, shed dormer will be lower than the current range of the roof. Yeah. That is the one. Getting there. That's people on it. A41. Any questions? Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on this application? Please raise your hand in Zoom if you would like to speak. Seeing nobody. So, are you okay with this?
Absolutely. What were the arguments? Was it that they were in this job? Threatening presentations and the three-dimensional view was interfering with the standard?
With that, I'll make the motion. I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Cameron Stevens for a special permit under Sections 5.4, 6.1.2, and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to construct a shed dormer on the second floor, the existing footprint, to create a master bedroom walk-in closet at 16 Old Essets Road, Assessors Map Number 56, Lot Number 19, District B, filed with the Town Clerk on August 3rd, 2022. Based on a finding that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw and the proposed dormer will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood which is located and the requirements and conditions under Section 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw for the granting of special permit have been met based on the condition that the dormer is constructed in accordance with the following dormer addition documents created by Studio Sargus dated 2022-01-12. Sorry, that's not right. It's 04-12, right? 04-12. Yeah. A101 floor plans demoed and proposed. A102 roof plan demoed and proposed. A401 exterior elevation. A402 3D views. A501 closet elevations. Do I have a second?
Second.
James, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Can I find one vote? Who would like to write it?
I'll write it.
You ready? She is hoping that we can do it quick. Is that right?
I would appreciate it. Just want to get it done before winter.
Who wants to review it? No, Brian won't here.
They know the conditions.
She's all confused.
Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, you're all set.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Anything else that you need, or should I pop off?
No, we have to know. Brian will write, we have the minutes to do so that we can write the decision and then we'll file it with the Town Clerk and then there's a 21-day appeal period.
Okay.
Once we file. Yeah, right. So, just wait till you get the petition.
Okay.
And then, I mean, you can technically start work before you feel that's a risk.
Yeah, he doesn't, he doesn't want to do that, so we're definitely going to wait the 21 days. So, would the 21 days be from tomorrow?
No, it's for when the decision is filed.
Okay.
And we have 90 days to write the decision.
Okay.
But we're going to try and get faster, so you understand that you'd like to.
All right.
No. They, they, they won't approve the building permit until we file the decision with the Town Clerk. It's on hold, waiting for approval. All right, we'll do our best.
Okay, I appreciate it, thanks guys.
Yeah. Yeah, right. The next application we're going to hear is the application of Charles Fields. Eight Kings Way, we didn't do a site visit because we've been out there twice. So, I will open the public hearing on the application of Charles Fields to modify the special permit granted on February 2, 2022 under Section 6.1.2, 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to expand the previously approved detached residential garage on a conforming structure on a non-conforming lot at Eight Kings Way, Assessors Map Number 7, Lot Number 12, and District C, filed with the Town Clerk on August 18th, 2022. Mr. Bruker, are you going to speak to this application?
Yes, please. My name is Remco Bruker, Bruker Design LLC. And we did the design for this project. You know the site fairly well. Most of you have been there already. It is a, it's a narrow lot. And you've seen in the past that the design for the house is fairly narrow and long. Last time we came to you, there was a request to attach this garage. Prior to that, it was a detached garage, but then additional land was purchased from the neighbor. And Mr. Phillyis and his organization has actually just about finished the house and it is ready to be sold and the potential buyer was hoping to get a little bit more space in the garage. And so, we'd like to apply and have your approval for an expansion of that garage by eight feet in length and not quite the existing width, but about 13'6" wide. The overall house itself and this portion all falls within the within the building envelope. And the only reason why we really need your approval is, is because the lot is too small in terms of size. But all the other requests in terms of lot coverage and impervious surface coverage have also been met.
Do you have a question?
I'm just looking at the coverage by structures table.
Yeah.
And it says allowable lot coverage by structure is 15%, 3,972 square feet. Then the total coverage by existing structure is 3,269.
Yeah. So, it's less. Why is it less? You, because it's not going up to the maximum coverage.
Oh, I thought that was the non-conforming part. Okay.
No, the only, the non-conf, sorry.
Yeah.
It's just increasing.
Yeah. Nevermind, sorry, great.
I have a good question.
Go ahead. I was speaking to that far there.
Quick question. Remco, is this, it looks like the garage is being extended. Can you tell us the overall depth of the garage? Is this being done so you can park two cars in there too?
Yeah, well, that, it's too small cars, but the, the thought is that indeed if there's a, a big nor'easter or a storm that in a pinch, they could get two cars in there.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, did, was there a conversation held with the others on this change?
Not specifically regarding this, but the, really the only neighbor that would be affected is the neighbor that the right-of-way goes over. And they've had a lot of discussions with them and that relationship is, is quite good. And they, they have no issues so far with any of the things that have been done on the house.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand in Zoom. Seeing none. Are you people down there okay? Maybe people down here?
Us people this size.
Are you okay? I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Charles Fields to modify the special permit granted on February 22, 2022 under Section 6.1.2 and 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw and/or other relief as may be necessary to add an eight-foot by 13-foot 6-inch section to the front for the previously approved attached garage at Eight Kings Way, Assessors Map Number 7, Lot Number 12, and District C, filed with the Town Clerk on August 18th, 2022. Based on the finding the proposed change in the project is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood than the previously approved structure and all requirements and conditions under Section 7.5.2 of the zoning bylaw the grant of a special permit have been met based on the condition that the revised attached garage is constructed in accordance with the following site and building plans prepared by Rem, prepared by Bruker Design LLC. Proposed site plan T1.0 dated 8/8/2022. Proposed lower floor plan A1.0 dated September 20/2020. Revised 8/8/2022. Proposed elevation A2.0 dated 5/28/21. Revised 8/8/2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian, second. Okay. Any discussion? Want to take a vote?
Yes.
Approved? Yeah.
Approved.
I'll write this one because I go the other ones.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I, I hope this is the last time we see each other for about this one, so.
Totally.
You always do a nice job, so it's our pleasure to review these.
The next item on the agenda is the appeal of an administrative decision at Two Blossom Lane. I will open the public hearing for the application of Benjamin V. Tyman, attorney, on behalf of Samuel and Tracy Byrne of 1 through 3 Blossom Lane for the appeal of an administrative decision under Section 7.4.5 of the zoning bylaw regarding a request for zoning enforcement filed with the Building Inspector on June 21, 2022 for construction in progress which appears to exceed the scope of a special permit granted and building permit issued at Two Blossom Lane, Assessors Map Number 17, Lot Number 12, and District E, filed with the Town Clerk on August 8th, 2022. Now, we received a letter from the applicant dated August 16, 2022, asking us to continue with our October meeting because the African's out of the country. So, I wasn't planning to discuss anything about the application.
Makes sense.
I think we need to take another call. Well, we, we have a letter that is sent in our package. So, I submit this letter as a request to continue the September 21, 2022 appeals hearing for October 19, 2022. As reasons therefore, Samuel and Tracy Byrne will be out of the country on September 21, 2022 and are unable to change their current travel plans to accommodate the current pandemic. So, at the request of the applicant dated August 16, 2022, I move to continue the public hearing to October 19, 2022 and extend the time for writing the decision to January 17, 2023 for the application of Benjamin V. Tyman, attorney, on behalf of Samuel and Tracy Byrne of 1 through 3 Blossom Lane for the appeal of an administrative decision under Section 7.4.5 of the zoning bylaw regarding a request for zoning enforcement filed with the Building Inspector on June 21st, 2022 for construction in progress which appears to exceed the scope of the special permit granted and building permit issued at Two Blossom Lane, Assessors Map Number 17, Lot Number 12, and District E, filed with the Town Clerk on August 8th, 2022. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. No, nothing to write.
Sarah? Can you hear me? It's Christine Delicio. I just, we were in that room last night. I just wanted to give you a heads up. You're the only one that I can really hear.
Okay.
I tuned in to hear, I just, last night we needed to move the computer when people were speaking, but like I said, you're the only one that I can understand. Thanks.
I'm going to break it. Breaking? Oh.
That's good, we're still off here.
Yeah? Yeah, all right.
Welcome.
Okay.
Sorry, I muted myself. That's better, yeah.
Thank you, great. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. We now move to administrative matters. The first item on the agenda is the Board of Health Clean Water Regulation that I distributed the proposal to everyone on the board, so you have a chance to look at it. I'm not sure this really impacts the Zoning Board of Appeals because it appears to be water resource areas that are under the curfew of the Planning Board. But Mr. Caloruso, would you like to speak briefly on this to us?
Yes, I will be brief. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak with you. This policy is a work in progress. We would like to develop a document that supports your decisions, Planning Board, and CONCOM. I would ask for your help in consolidating your thoughts and sending them to the Board of Health so that they can be incorporated into the policy. As you're aware of, you know, water is, is going to be more precious than Bitcoin before you know it. Our neighbors to the west have got problems, have been having a drought for a long time. The Hamilton study shows that while we have water that's, you know, sufficient, our recharge aquifers are lower than, than anyone thought because they are interconnected to our neighbors, unfortunately. If we have another bad winter, we, dry winter, dry spring, it, it could be problematic next summer, but that's a lot of ifs. The real wolf at the door is the EPA. The EPA sent a notice around on September 6th saying that they are going to classify two of the PFAs that are in our water supply as toxic compounds. They have gone to close comments on October 6th and tried to have them declared as toxic by the end of the year. I don't know how that will, what kind of they'll give us as far as the Lincoln well. But if they follow past procedures, we may have limited access to that water. That's 40% of the water, roughly 40% of the water that the town needs. We would be hard pre, we're going to need every drop of water available. And we'd like to make sure that it says there's no contamination and, and as clean as possible. This regulation is similar to what we do on the Title V septic systems where we are obligated to require under non-conforming situations, the most technically advanced system available. And that's the intent going forward. So if there was an issue, if you had an issue that with a certain location or a certain design, we would support that, which would also reinforce your decision to make it much more difficult to challenge. So I'd ask your help, I'd ask your thoughts when we, I'm giving this presentation next week to the other two boards. We will then consolidate it and pass along a final draft for your review and comment on before we go through the thrilling public hearing process. Are there any, any questions that I can?
Anybody have any questions?
Uh, which two boards are you presenting to next week?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear this.
Boards are you presenting to next week?
You're, you're gobbled, I'm sorry.
Which, which two boards are you presenting to next week?
I'm sorry, the planning and CONCOM.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, Peter, you said there were two toxins identified by the EPA in this water supply. Can you tell us what those are?
Surely. They are chloro, perfluoro, oxytane sulfate, PFO, and chlorofluor, chloroxinate acid, PFOA. They are part of the six compounds that the state of Massachusetts requires us to test for. You, I don't know what percentage of the overall six they, they are. I don't know that. But as you know, we're awfully close to the Massachusetts limit of 20 per trillion. But this would override that, really wouldn't matter. It, it can get really, really complicated. Having, having been involved in toxic waste sites, it, it's a, it's a mess. The good news is you get, you get to be on the list for funding out of the super fund. The bad news is you could be on that list for 10 years before they get to you. And you can't do much with the land or the area until you clean it up. And they're looking for sources and they, they suspect that hazardous dumps that have been capped are probably a site. They're, they suspect that leach fields, old, old leach fields, since these compounds are in food containers, they're in household products, they're cleaning products, so they expect them to be in the soil. We, we have found very high limits. I believe it was, I could have my numbers wrong, but I thought it was 180 to 200 parts per trillion around our landfill up on Pine Street. It's not near the water supply now. But, you know, I, I suspect the feds are going to make us do something about that. We are now trying to track where the water, where the PFAs are coming from in the Lincoln Street well. It's probably easier to, well, we hope it's easier to correct it at the source. The estimates that we've heard to treat it at the plant are somewhere around 10 to 12 million to build a treatment. It'll take a year and a half to two years to, to correct it. We'd have to purchase water at a rate of 2 to 3 million a year in the meantime. 60% of the water bill is the identification and treatment of water. So you can expect the water bills, worst case, the water bills may go up, may go up a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the extra detail.
All right, and thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. So the next item that I wanted to discuss is zoning by law changes. Will you say that one?
I am. I just, yes, I am. You're going to discuss the one or two, I don't know.
Right, yeah. Uh, okay, so, um, yeah, so the zoning, as I said, everything's up on the town website. I sent you some materials. There are a few sections that I think they impact us and it makes sense to be us to review them and to take a position on them if we can. The first one is on swimming pools, which is a request that we made to the reconsecration committee a couple of years ago, whenever it started. And that was to allow swimming pools by right if they met all the state requirements and if they meet all the setback requirements and everything else in the zoning, zoning bylaw. And I suggested to the planning board that it might make sense to have the building department have a form that the applicant would get the director butters to sign saying they don't have any concerns about the project. And if a director butter had a concern, then it would go to special permit.
That makes sense.
That makes sense?
It makes a lot of sense.
So that it would take work off our plate and it's very rare for us to receive any input from the public on swimming pools. Well, sports are a different story.
You can get a lot of swimming pools. And are we one of the only municipalities in the state that actually requires swimming pools to get a special permit?
I don't know.
Because I've, I've heard that before.
Yeah.
One of the few towns that actually runs it from zoning.
Yeah, you know, um, I don't really know.
Speeds up a lot.
I don't, not sure if it's really within the purview of zoning, but as we distribute those water regulations, I think maybe that's some, I, it must maybe we should keep in mind, but if we're doing swimming pools, I mean, that's huge water use.
Um, usually they have to truck the water in to fill it.
Really?
Yeah, so the guy doesn't reach it a long time.
Yeah. So it's not our water, so it doesn't matter.
When they're returning, fill the pool. Okay. Come on, water, that's my understanding, yeah.
All right.
I'm not wrong there. That sounds good.
What are your thoughts, Sean?
No, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm just, um, water, but I don't think you need to prove everything.
Right, okay.
But the abutters will have a chance to object, right?
Yes, and then, then it would go to a special permit. So that it, it, you know, what, what we always find when we have things before us is that if people have talked to their butters in advance, we have very little, few issues. If they haven't talked to them, then that's when the issues arise.
Will the, again, the question you always end up with on swimming pools.
Be that.
I'm sorry. The question that always comes to mind as part of swimming pools at all would be lighting.
Yeah.
Okay. Fencing, which I think is state.
Yeah.
I think lighting is the big issue. Is that going to be incorporated in how we write this regulation?
Well, we could say that they have to use low level lighting.
It, it's also lighting and views. There's typically fencing sometimes, not just the pool, but also to give the neighbors some privacy. There's two levels of fencing. There's the safety fence here on the pool, and then there's fencing from the abutters to technical. We usually look at both. Like, for example, the neighbor can see, like, being pulled in a particular fence. Privacy fence with some kind of screening.
But the neighbor would have the chance to request that through this process anyway, right?
Yeah.
So when, when Paula went and gets an application, he's going to send notice to the butters and then?
No, he's not going to send notice, we know. As part of applying for the building permit, they would have to complete the form that is signed by the abut.
Oh.
So that would be part of the building permit submission.
So the neighbor, if the person wants to build a pool, has to walk around.
Has to walk to the, uh, and show them what they're doing.
Right, the butters.
Say, are you okay?
Okay.
If they don't, then it comes. If the neighbors don't approve.
Okay.
That'll take a lot of these on.
I think so, yeah. Just the ones that don't, people very near them.
I think in terms of screening, it might be a mistake to, too specific because that's very case specific.
Okay.
But I think the lighting is, there is an easy, but that's not case specific. And that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Other people disagree.
Yeah.
We speak.
I agree.
Well, Ryan made a pretty much fencing, and that's always a requirement for a pool. I'm just going to say.
So it's safety. That's a state, the state requires the type of fence. It's got to be four feet high, it's going to have the locking latch and it's.
It would just be a thing on the Paula, I guess, form because will you have a fence? In the formal, in formally whatever, state of the environment, the neighbor should initial it and say, yeah.
Yeah, well, they have to submit to the building department a copy with all the fences shown and everything. So they have to submit.
Yeah, you have to use a bra.
Yes, great, yeah. What we normally get is what normally is submitted to the building inspector after we see it.
Great.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Good.
Okay. See if they can add low level lighting. Low voltage, it's not low level, it's a low voltage, right?
Or dark sky compliant or whatever.
Yeah, it's all kind of dark sky compliant.
It is, okay. But five blocks.
Okay.
You know how their population burns down like 70%? Because of all the artificial light in the world, they can't, like, meet each other.
Um.
I didn't know you were a expert on eating habits.
I, I found out on a violent test tour the other day.
So the next item is, I just wanted to make people aware of it, is that they, oh, here's the swimming pool one. Yeah, so this says, no swimming pool shall be considered in the setbacks. All pools shall have a fence at least four foot high. All lighting associated with a swimming pool must be directed downward and must not create light spillage closer to the property line or the setbacks of the principal level. Landscape fence perimeter screen visibility from the street is encouraged. And any pool that doesn't meet this criteria comes to a special permit.
That's very welcome.
Okay. Um, the next section is, um, they've added a use table. So it used to be that all of the allowed uses in every district were written out and they were just listed down. They've now created a table that, that for each lists all of the allowed uses and then for each district indicates whether it's allowed, allowed use by right, whether it's not allowed, whether it's allowed via special permit from the ZPA or the planning board.
Wow, that's great.
Is that good?
Very good.
So it'll be making it much easier for people.
With our stones as well.
Yeah, to figure it out.
This is great. We're, that's, that together would be a very nice job.
It's fantastic.
Yes. I participated in that a couple of years ago. So they didn't change uses.
It just makes it clear.
Yeah.
It's always easier than making tests.
Um, see, that's what the table looks like.
All right.
Okay.
Will there be a video coming with that?
A video?
Yeah. People, people don't read anymore.
Can you put it on YouTube, please? Can you put data? Use number one.
Yeah.
Um.
Have to just edit it yourself.
The next, the next section is Section 7, which I sent to you, non-conforming uses instructions. So what's being proposed is a change that people, some people with non-conforming block sizes, non-conforming structures would be able to do the construction with a building permit but not a special permit. Okay? And let me kind of explain.
Would that be just like what we just worked today, where it's really not according to the existing?
No, it wouldn't because it was going up in height through the setback. So that would still require a special permit. Let me, let me explain it by talking about my house. Okay?
Sure.
The, the front west corner of my house is a few feet into the setback. So a variance was issued when it was built. Everything else is, I'm short on frontage too a little bit, but everything else is conforming. So under this proposal, if I wanted to put an addition on the east side, which I did a couple of years ago and had to get a special permit, I could do that with just a building permit as long as I'm meeting all of the setbacks and all of the required requirements on that east side. Because that's, that east side is currently conforming.
Okay.
Um, if I wanted to extend on the west side, that's an existing non-conformity, so I need a special permit. Because you still need a special permit for any existing non-conformity, but only with respect to that non-conformity. And if I wanted to move my house forward over the cliff and go into the front setback, I would need a variance. Because that's a new non, non-conformity. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Um, so the change is the fact that somebody with an undersized lot could do something to their house without a special permit as long as they met all of the coverage requirements and the setback requirements. Same thing with the, um.
So as you have said all along, he is the center of town.
Right.
So it would eliminate a lot of these.
It would, it would eliminate a lot of, of things that come before us, which, and, and if you think about it, if, if my house, if, if that, this little corner of my house was not inadvertently built in the setback, it was moved back, it's four feet actually, then I can do anything I want to my house because everything's conforming. Um, and so why not allow people to do stuff on the conforming areas of their structures?
Right, considering which side of the property is versus the whole property.
Right, yeah, yeah. So does that make sense?
It does make sense if it reduces for us. It makes it easier for the citizens to get.
Speak up.
Ability permits, yes.
I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking hard. So are you talking about the AP, you said, are you talking about?
Okay, I'm talking about non-conforming lots and, um, structures.
I didn't read this, I thought it was such.
Shut up.
Okay, all right, that helps, helps me think. Um, okay, so. My question is, when you have, and I think we just talked about this and I got confused, so I'm sorry.
All right.
When, okay, here it's like, yeah. So are you saying lot coverage and, and imperious surface are not, does it matter what the non-conformity is?
I, if, if you have insufficient area on your lot.
Yeah.
You, you, it would be covered as, as long as you meet all the setback requirements and the coverage.
So if you have insufficient area on your lot, it no longer has to come before us as long as everything else is conforming.
Correct.
What about, is that same for purvis, for this?
Yes, okay.
As long as they fall within their kinds.
As long as it's not making it non-conforming.
They, they have to meet all of the, um, the coverage and the imperious surface requirements. If they don't meet it today.
Yeah.
They have to come before us.
Okay.
For a special permit. Yeah. And we see that a lot with people who put in driveways that don't need a building permit.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden their coverage, imperious coverage is too high. So this is really talking about the, the small lots, the short frontage and setback encroachment. So are we good with this?
Yes, makes sense. And thank you for your explanation.
Okay. It's very difficult to read it, figure it out.
No, I mean, explain it.
No, it is.
Okay. Now we need to.
With small lots, short footage, and what else?
Sarah?
Yes, Christine?
Can I, can I make a comment or no? Is that not appropriate?
I, I don't think we're taking public comment in this meeting on this. I, I don't think we're taking public comment in this meeting on this, these items.
Okay.
We're, we're trying to provide our input to the planning board as to the input of the ZPA.
I just feel like you've missed a little bit of all the potential consequences. So I feel like as of right, Butter's appeal is gone, a two-story in the setback, this is a hundred percent. You haven't mentioned that this has been brought in front of something.
Christina, if it's, if you go in the second story in the setback, it requires a special permit because it's nonconforming.
Well, that's not my understanding, but.
The, the only thing you can do is to make a con, a change that is conforming in all aspects with respect to the change. So the, the thing we heard tonight on adding a dormer to, to build, um, a master bedroom closet, I don't know if you were on to that, but that was over the existing footprint, but because that side of the house was in the setback, it still would have required a special permit.
I could be completely wrong, but my understanding is that a ranch in the setback that's asking for the second story would not need a special permit if this bylaw was passed.
No, it would need a special permit because it's nonconfor, you're, you're altering the nonconforming, a nonconforming segment of the setback.
So just explain it to me, because I, if you're just going up a second story, you're not increasing the nonconformity.
You're going up, it, it, it's adding to mass, you're, you're, it, it doesn't matter if you're not changing the nonconformity. So if, if there's a nonconformity, any construction in that part that's nonconforming would require a special permit. Okay.
I appreciate your opinion, I think it's going to town council, that's just not my understanding of this, but I just think we should come back to that and make sure we're all on the same page, thank you, Sarah. Sorry for interrupting.
Next is section nine. There are two segments to this, I think. One is the new section, um, senior housing, nine point three, I'm gonna do that one first because I need to go through a little piece. And currently, we don't really have a provision in the bylaw for senior housing. So this is adding, um, provisions for senior housing facility that will require a special permit from the planning. And it sets, it sets out all of the requirements, it allows the building height to go to forty-five feet instead of thirty-five feet. Talks about coverage and setbacks, design standards, open space, parking, etc. Landscaping.
Does that make sense if we need to look at four?
Pretty well spelled out.
This is only contemplating a facility, not individual houses.
Right.
This isn't contemplating anything to do with people who want, they're gonna live with that and, and small houses, only a big.
This is helping.
Multi unit.
Multi unit structure.
Yes, it is, we're section four. It's in the definition sections, it defines and it includes assisted living, um, facility, um, it would, it would include the, um, Manchester Housing Authority sites.
Versatile.
Yeah, no single. So then we get to nine point one, which is the ADUs. Now currently in our bylaw, we have the ADU section, which requires the lot size to be double, required except in District E, and requires that you can't cover more than thirty-five percent of the structure um, within this structure and that there's parking for, for cars. Uh, then we have another section, which we have used too many times. Um, and that is the, the space for an family living quarters for an employee in an accessory structure, existing accessory structure. Um, I suggested that that be expanded to include family members. Because what we found is that they say the family member is an employee and we don't think that. Then we have this separate ADU.
Can you just explain that a little bit, what do you mean by, you just said one on something else, a separate ADU from the first one was square grid, remember this?
Yes, family member or employee, that section.
That section.
That's in the use, yeah.
Okay, okay, really good, so that's a, and now we're talking about a new section which would not contemplate family members or employees.
It's a new section which would be by right and it would, it seems to assume that you're gonna rent it out.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, it limits it to nine inch square feet. I think that, I, I've done a study of all of the ADU like things we've approved. They've all been more than nine inch square feet except for the one that was under the AD by law at, um, I'll link it out, that one is under nine inch square feet. But all the other things we're seeing are, it's really parents selling their house, giving their money to their kids to add on, to give them space and they're over, they're larger than nine inch square. So and the, the I think there's a clause in here saying that they may not be rented for periods of less than six months, um, and they require a written lease, that's not viable with his family in there. Um, and also I don't see how that is enforceable. And then it requires people every five years to reaffirm for a point of sale. I don't see that's unforcible, and there's a termination clause. Uh, says the use of the ADU shall terminate under the direction of the building inspector if the terms of this bylaw are violated and in accordance with section seven point oh of the town zone bylaws. I don't see how you can terminate it, are you gonna make them take out their kitchen? Um, or is that gonna mean that if it's terminated, they're gonna appeal the building inspector's decision and come to the ZPA anyway? And I would rather rule on an application rather than on an appeal, because we don't have much information on appeals.
I don't think.
That's my version.
Broken, I'm all right with this. Nine inch square feet is still a decent sized unit, okay? And does this address the parking to go along with it?
It requires parking for one additional car. Yeah.
No, I just, I think that what we, my opinion maybe ADUs along.
Well, what we could suggest is you take the current ADU provision we have, which requires the double lot size and say you just need the single lot size and require parking for three cars relevant. Three cars total. Two for the single family residence and one for the ADU, and, and just leave it at that, still under set, still a special permit, but it just makes it simpler.
Take out the employee language?
No, that's separate, that's in the other section, all right, that's in the detached structure, the, the.
ADU is always attached, right, the ADU?
Yeah.
And so like a garage, apartment over it, that's detached, it's different than the ADUs, ADU is always gonna be attached to your house, even if it's a garage.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, so what you're saying, if we're opening up, uh, the language, what was still requiring a special permit?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think that we have so many small lots, that I think it's crazy that it required a double lot size, and that's why instead of using that section of the code today, they're going to disemploy you.
Yeah, nobody has a double lot.
I saw, I, you know, I think that's, that's reasonable.
Okay.
Right, I just, I think that's, uh.
And it has the thirty-five percent of that.
We're looking at trying to turn single family zoning into allowing multi-family building, you know?
Right.
Is what this is, what this is circumventing, okay? The zoning.
And, and we have great difficulty controlling any of this, I mean, we've been issuing special permits for employees and then I hear they're being rented out.
And to your point, okay, we terminated, does that mean some has to go in and rip everything off?
Exactly.
Who's gonna enforce that?
Well, yeah.
Pay taxes, they'll appeal.
Come to us, now we get the mess.
And then who's gonna monitor the leasing?
No, that's what they're essentially doing, unenforceable, it's all.
Set up a home of the.
Look at Airbnb and.
It's all self, you know, it's all self-suspension, give me a break.
No, I think that, uh, I, I do support, um, expecting allowing greater flexibility and I still think that you shouldn't require a special permit. What about detached ADUs?
That's the one that's the, the employee and family.
We had that six months ago on, uh.
Ocean Street.
On Union Street.
Oh yeah, Union Street, we had Ocean Street and we had the Central Street one, the house that used to be yellow.
And we had, whatever it was, was this name you a couple of years ago, there was the yellow house at the.
Yeah, Central, yeah, that was the Central Street one where the mother was going to be employed.
Yeah.
There's no, mother's living there still, there's no kids at home.
Their dogs.
No, they weren't, the dogs are gone.
The dogs, okay.
I think so, I'm, yeah, I haven't seen them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Maybe.
Could be.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But I, I just think. It kind of really our business, what people's families do.
No.
I, I, yeah, I don't know why they have to be, you know. So I think, um, I think this new, um, proposed regulation, there's something that I like about it, but there are some places where I, I think it's really restrictive and it's gonna be difficult, so, um, overall, I think I'm saying I agree with what Sarah proposed over this new regulation. I, I think it will be, um, really difficult to monitor the six months, the leases, um, redoing them, I mean, I guess it's a ton of admin, like, I, who's gonna do this and how would it work? And also the setup of no more than twenty ADUs every given a year, like, what the heck are, like, will you do a lottery? Are people gonna flood in the town hall, like, it'd be crazy, I, I think, you know.
So to be clear, we're just saying we're not going to allow it.
Right, by the special permit.
It's that special permit.
And they can exceed twenty. I mean, it can, it can be more than twenty if they.
Truth be told, I mean, so we should do a year, aren't we?
We have, yeah, I mean, since two thousand and sixteen. Six.
I would say this, I think that applied to us, or definitely what I think is, is missing. I think there's a lot of building that happens in this town that doesn't come before us. There's a lot of ADUs that are being and have been constructed.
There are, there are in-law suites that are created without a range, and then after the fact, they just put a range in them, that's the only difference. Yeah, right, yeah.
Why don't they bring in that as a technical?
Yeah, I said, get it, come and talk. I read, it can take pans nine by thirteen inches.
Uh huh, yeah, you have enough power to see.
Yeah, right.
So, so we're saying they stop to come for us, to ask for a special permit, it's not allowed as of right.
Correct.
But they don't need to prove family employee and they don't even have to have a lot size. Free practice, by moving on one point, yeah, okay, but, um, that, it makes sense to me.
So the parking has to be on a line, not a street.
Correct. Because that's what we're trying to do in this to get. Cars off the street. The street's a mess right now.
I'm telling you that. I mean, I know we're not in charge of the street, so I'm not.
There's four people living in the house next door and they each have a car.
I know. Okay, so, any other thoughts? I do, this is just our recommendation.
Oh, yeah.
Right? What are we recommending to?
Anyone. Yeah, and.
If they disagree.
Yeah, oh, they may disagree, and then the question will be if, if they do disagree, will you want me to say something in the special permit?
We could all just.
Give our opinion.
Don't do that.
To get, we're talking to Rockford, I mean, we couldn't speak at a town meeting, just kind of give our opinion.
The whole comm did.
Yeah.
In protest.
Uh huh, and that is not a possible comm, it's a rest.
So, let's not do that. Okay. I think the members of the planning board are, are.
Great, so.
Are they going to agree with what we're recommending?
No, they want to do the, yeah. They want to do ADUs by right because they feel it will have cluster housing crisis, and I just don't see I, I just don't see that it's enforceable, and the problem is, is that anybody who does anything and somebody doesn't like it, they come to us on appeal. And I just would much rather issue a special permit on an application rather than
Do it after.
Have to do appeals.
With that special, uh, special permit criteria that they have to follow.
Right.
And follow inside that criteria, then it's enforceable action.
Exactly, right, that's kind of.
Makes it a little more straightforward.
Do you agree with that, Sean, or no?
I do.
Okay, okay.
Because if they're just getting the appeal, it's hard to know what the original decision
Right.
was contemplating, yada, 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 so it's like stepping in the middle of a problem, it's really hard to do.
Right, yeah.
So, um, I think that that makes.
So, and I encourage you to go on the website and look at, um, the proposed changes, um, maybe before our next meeting and see if there's anything else you want to discuss. I think I discussed, I think we've discussed the, the major changes that impact us. I mean, they, they, yeah, there's stuff on cluster housing and other things that doesn't impact us, so I don't really feel we have the knowledge to give much input on that. But you're certainly welcome to if you want to.
Yeah.
Yeah. I actually, that's where it's right now.
Are you real?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm percent, I'm only forty-two.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, next item on the agenda is review of the August seventeenth minutes, people look at those?
Yes.
Are we good with them?
Yeah, I'm good with those.
I have one change, let me pull it up on my phone, but you know, it's my cell, there's one like, I'm pretty sure, it's not me. Uh, there's a question mark, it says like you asked a question, let me just find it. It's a statement about you asking a question and it says, there's a question mark at the end. Uh, it's under it's a new applications, uh, this is the seventh Miss Point Road application, under the board comments. There's a sentence that said, Ms. Milisch asked if there were any members of the public who wished to be heard on this application, and it ends with a question mark, it should just, that's a statement, he asked if there were any members of the public that wanted to be heard, heard. I guess, and I was an associate of Big Wheel for a long time. I guess, and I was an associate of the bylaw firm for a long time, basically what they make you do is come to you. Where your pay to be lawyer.
Okay.
Another resident here?
Gail, are you on the phone, and can you tell us what decisions are outstanding?
I am on the phone, and I can tell you which decisions are outstanding.
Okay.
To Woodhome Road, Sarah Melish is going to write that.
Yeah.
Seven Smith Point Road, James and I have discussed that today, he's writing it. And Thirty-Nine Coolidge Point, John is writing that one.
Okay.
Watch the bullet.
I know.
Brian, you are reviewing that one.
Yes, I am, I know that. I have nothing to review at this point.
And which one is pushing for? Is, what, is Seven Smith Point the one that's pushing?
Yes, yeah, and James and I talked about that today, or emailed about it.
We just approved that. Right, so, when, do you think we can do that soon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. As you know, the forty B has been appealed, and there is a conference of counsel on Thursday, October fourth. And as my understanding, what will happen at that meeting is an agreement will be reached regarding deliverables and timeframes for the balance of the process, I believe they established a schedule.
Is it just like a meeting conference between the attorneys, or is it overseen by some?
Oh, it's an AJC thing.
Okay.
AJ, it's a team, I'm gonna sit in on it, I don't plan to say anything.
October fourth, you said?
Yeah. And it is, it just, you know, because we have to have expert witnesses and stuff, and so the question is, how much time do you need?
Study basically discovery.
Yeah, yeah, so. That was faster than I expected.
For the first, yeah, meeting, yeah. Who knows, I don't know how long these time I usually are.
The town council kind of indicated post media.
That's...
Yeah. And you, I sent you the appeal.
You did.
Okay. It's interesting.
Yeah, revisionist history.
Yeah. Okay, anything else we need to discuss? Oh, the other thing is, we'll be moving the, we'll lose two people. Site visits back to Saturday mornings at nine thirty. I know that's a problem for you, do you want to enable them?
I don't want to be there, so, you know, it's just, they're all, yeah.
It's too dark.
It is too dark, but yeah. I mean, yeah.
You can do FaceTime on the phone.
You could.
So our next meeting is October nineteenth, and so the site visit will be the Saturday before that. And so far, we have one application. A good old Nine Washington Street.
Oh.
So that's gonna be on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
We've already seen it.
Yeah, but it's a completely, it's a different design, and that was pretty contentious. So we need to have an explanation as to how it's changed. At the site visit.
We'll have that, and then the continuation that we're...
Two blossom, yeah, right. And the two blossom laying that, which is pretty comprehensive.
Yes.
What do you say, making it ten o'clock in the morning? Nine thirty, is ten better? What?
Earlier.
I can't, I can't get up and go.
Oh, yeah, no, later, later, it's also, yeah.
Do you know lights ever they end?
No. It's also gonna be dark, it's over the ham soon, so.
Okay. We're at, I will move to adjourn the meeting, do I have a second? Ryan, seconds, all in favor? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close this.